I want to thank you all for being here, and you're always welcome. It's warmer in today than it is outside, thank goodness, but we're going to try to do the best we can to give everybody an opportunity to speak today. There's an agenda on the table in my left rear corner back here if you would like one, and I would ask that you raise your hand if you cannot hear. Just raise your hand and shake your hand and get my attention, and we will do what we can to do a better job in speaking directly into the microphones. And there are commitments beyond this meeting in regards to town business today. So, the last meeting, we were here for five hours without a break, without dinner, and today we're starting at 2:00. We're going to try our best to give everybody an opportunity, and the clerk has given me the list of people that have signed up. And as some of you know, there's a three-minute limit on your speaking, and whenever I call your name, if you have signed up to speak, come to the podium to my right and speak into the microphone and give your name and address so that we can properly record it in the minutes, and we will proceed. As the agenda reflects, the second item on the agenda is public comments on agenda items only. So, the agenda items only as outlined in the agenda, which is on display for your review on the table in the back. So, those that have signed up, I have in my hand the list, be able to speak for three minutes, and the first person signed up is Ann Arnold. Here she is.
I'm Ann Arnold. I live at 124 South Berry Street. In the 53 years that I have either been a homeowner or a resident on this island, I have seen a lot of changes, and I don't even want to talk about having changes. Then, when I first started coming here, there were houses that were maybe, I don't even know, now streets, you might have one house on the street, or maybe two. So, there has so much, so much growth here since, in those 53 years. And when we have to look at change, we also have to realize that it's one to not make everybody happy. I'm not happy with talking about charging people to park on our island, but it's necessary, in my opinion, that we have to do it so that we can manage all the cars that are coming this way. And for the sake of you, Mr. and Mrs. Commissioners, I want to tell you that I support whatever you decide to do. I'm in full support of you.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Bob Babington?
I'd like to thank the town and the Commissioners for, I think, doing that to a great job. I am in favor of parking, pay parking with a few exceptions. I think property owners that pay tactically on the island should be exempt. I think parking in the right ways in front of residences or local businesses, that should be exempt. And parking in the marshes, I don't think we should consider that. Up until now, the homeowners, the property owners as a whole, we each, we pay for parking, we pay for it. Public access, bathroom construction, maintenance, trash removal, I think it's time that people that use these facilities start paying for it. I encourage the town to procure more parking, especially under the bridge for boats and boat trailers. I also think that the town should go ahead and pick up the pier for the parking and the public access that it allows. The town desperately needs that property. It doesn't need the pier, but it needs the parking that the pier provides. Without that parking, we are in jeopardy of losing the $15 to $20 million that we go through in beach re-nourishment every three to five years. $3.3 million by the pier is a bargain, in my opinion, to secure that, that grant money. We lose that grant money, we're not going to be talking about $3.2 million, we're going to be talking about $15, $20 every three to five years. Then, we're going to be looking at these folks up here saying, why didn't you do something about it? So, I'm all in favor of going ahead with the pier, have the parking that it provides. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Jim McCaskill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Jim McCaskill, 110 Sunshine Lane, and I want to address my comments to my neighborhood, which is the streets around Sunshine Lane, that's where I live. And so, if you look at page eight, and it basically is the area that begins at the gated area at Shell Drive and runs down to Point West Drive, because that's where the marsh begins, and so from there, there are perpendicular streets. There are some, the only street with public access there is Deale. So, out of those 13 streets, there's one public access. It's interesting that the one street's Deale, and it shows none, no parking, and it ranges the other, there's some, eight, I think, that had five, and five streets that had 10. For the life of me, I tried to figure out why some had 10 and some had five. I've driven each of those streets, looked at them, they're the same size, the basic same construction, and the only thing I could figure is somebody just needed a bigger number of spaces, so they put them in. There seems to be no rhyme or reason as to why some streets had 10, some had five. The concern is that the lack of public access and facilities. And so, with Deale being the only one with public access, I guess what I'm proposing is that the board consider making the parking where, where there is, there are public facilities, so that you can direct the visitors to the island, to the area where you can provide parking, can provide beach access for them, and perhaps restroom facilities. If you don't provide restroom facilities, then the only restroom facility is the beach. And so, we don't want that. And you know, it's the day visitors. We have visitors that come from rentals, but the private property owners provide for them. They provide housing, bathrooms, kitchens, parking, and public access. It's the day visitors that are coming in, and they need facilities, and they need to have a place to park, but it needs to be where there are facilities. And so, I just encourage you to focus that, use the plan to direct those visitors to those facilities so we can better serve them, and have no problem with it being paid if that's what's necessary to make it flow financially. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Amy Archer?
I am Amy Archer, at 124 Stone Street. We are not just upon the beach, and it is our duty to enhance accessibility for our island for all to enjoy. It is your job to find the best solution and make the best sense ecologically and economically. Holden Beach is known for being a family beach, and after the last meeting, I did not feel the family. As I was starting to research, I pulled up North Carolina General Statute 113A-134.1, and the last sentence, it states, "Oppressing need in North Carolina to establish a comprehensive program for the identification, acquisition, improvement, and maintenance of public access ways to the beaches and coastal waters." I am for public parking and the C M K. The North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality Division of Coastal Management, the Public Beach and Coastal Waterfront Access Program, for those that may or may not know, but as I was researching, is a program that funds the projects to help improve our coastal areas for residents and visitors. The N C D E Q, back in October, awarded Holden Beach a little over $180,000 for the acquisition of the oceanfront property. Are these funds only allotted for the purchase of 441 O B W, which I am for, or would these funds be available to be utilized for paid parking? Has the B O C contacted North Carolina Division of Coastal Management to see if they have any funding, or is it allowable for the pier access to be repaired? The B O C was quick to put a potential parking platform out, so the puzzle, shame on you.
And you all should have taken the time to review the consequences of adding an excessive amount of parking that absolutely made no sense. I trust the B O C to make the best decision for our island, and I'll support the future outlook of paid parking, but not in the sense that will damage our marshland or spending to add along the marsh boulevard to create parking spaces or unnecessary side street parking. We need access that is affordable for visitors to come and go, and not feel they need to stay all day. It's my opinion that the purpose, the proposed fees for our local area is excessive and needs to be reworked so that it is more affordable for our community as well as beneficial to the town. I support the B O C. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Layton Johnson?
I have no problem with the visitors, as we say, coming to the island. The problem is, when I bought the property, there was no park. Now, we're going to have, when I go out and I swing or cook underneath the house, we're going to have people coming and going. They leave their trash, you go to food line, they're in your shower when you come back. So, I have no, I have no issue with the folks using the beach. I think we should look at something like a shuttle system, parking, perhaps off the island where these folks can get access. We have so much growth off the island. I just do not see how you could possibly place all these folks on the beach. Of course, paying will help, but I think we need to look at this real careful with to what we're inviting in. So, I would say, I guess the thing with me is where we bought the property, there was no parking on the streets, and now we're going to have parking. I chose to buy the property at this location. These folks that are visiting chose to buy the property where they live. So, but I have no animosity toward the people that want to drive in. It's just that, I just see what a headache it is at our location, particularly at the Fourth of July and other times. So, I just hope we do a lot of research before we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jim Toomes?
Hi there. Jim Toomes, my wife and I, Karen, own 265 O B E.
Microphone, please.
Microphone?
Speak into the mic.
I will do that. We are at 265 O B E. What I've seen as part of the proposed plan is to open up O B E on the south side and allow large vehicles to park bumper-to-bumper along the berm. My concern is that there isn't enough room between the berm and the edge of the sidewalk, not to mention the three or four streetlights, which infringe another two and a half, three feet. Because I've seen on a couple of major holiday weekends, people parking up along the berm, damaging the berm, and then there's not enough room for people to, for emergency vehicles or people to walk the sidewalk. So, I think it's a safety concern as well as an aesthetic concern. I do support the concept of paid parking and generating revenue to support our wonderful island, but I think we have to do it in a measured and considered sort of way.
Thank you very much.
That's my thought. Thank you.
All right. Appreciate it. Larry Bloom?
I'm Larry Bloom from 108 Lyons Paul. And I would like to ask the Commissioners to consider deleting H-23 off of the list, most likely H-22 also. I don't know if anybody's here that's going to talk on H-22, but when you turn onto Lyons Paul, the first four streets, the first four houses are all driveways, so that would violate 7202, where you can't park in somebody's driveway. So, I understand there's no limit on the size of a driveway. It's not totally on all, well, maybe a couple of them, but mine, it's not totally the whole thing, but there's no grass out there. So, they would be blocking traffic whenever they pull on into H-23, if that would pass, and I had something else, can't remember. Okay, that's all I've got to say, just consider deleting H-23. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bloom. Marty Arrowood?
Marty Arrowood, 114 Shrimp Street. My comments kind of piggyback the meeting last week. First Ranger Street, and I'm here to speak for those owners primarily on shrimp, crab, and conch, part of the L S Holden subdivision, we're at the east end. My comments are a follow-up and to reiterate the emails from the owners after last week's meeting. We're fine with Ranger Street being used for L S V parking. It has been for the last eight or nine years. What we do want is for our bike and wagon parking that exists now to be added to the plan. One half of the east side of Ranger currently has post and rope designation for bikes and wagons. We have two bike racks and request that two more be added because of the increased use. Also, while I'm here, could we have some more trash cans? I request that vehicle parking at the east end be limited to the designated lots. This will solve the issues of visitors parking on our side streets using homeowners' facilities. Three times last year, my husband and I chased visitors out from underneath the homeowners across the street who don't rent the house, they were using the showers to rinse off before they left. As a permanent residence, we saw a large increase in that last year. Also, this would eliminate the side street parking, so we wouldn't have to pick up trash every Monday. I'm in favor of the public access shown on the pier property. This allows those residents of the canal streets located adjacent to the pier property to have an access within walking distance. Without that access, from what I can see, the closest would be across the street from Fayetteville Street to the east, which is about, I think, six streets down from Greensboro, or the firehouse beyond the marsh at the west. Without L S V parking at the adjacent, at the end of those adjacent streets, that's a pretty long walk for somebody who lives at the end of Greensboro Street. I also support the owners who maintain private accesses and do not want L S V parking at the end of their street to eliminate the parking from the map. It's my understanding, like the gentleman spoke, that the Kama access, the public access at the far west end is part of accesses that must be provided every so many miles or every so many whatever for the number of people, that the Kama access was never meant for public, it was meant for those people in the community, so that those numbers of people could be accounted for when the access went in, which is part of the funding issue. That was the way it was explained to me about 10 years ago when we went through the Ranger Street debacle. So, you know, I am in support of paid parking. I think that, after living here 33 years, that those that enjoy the beach that come over should help with the police, the trash pickup, and what has been said. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate Day?
Hi, my name's Kate Day. I live at 119 Seagull, and I too am for paid parking, but like others have spoken, I really want it done in a measured, thoughtful way. From the last meeting, I understand that many streets with private accesses, as we know, all the residents of the street keep up the private access, would be eliminated from the proposed parking plan. However, I understand Seagull is still on the plan, and as you know, we have a private access, and I know it's included because of its proximity to Deale, and I think another gentleman spoke about that. So, we took a look at this, and the proposed paid parking area would be located approximately 105 feet from the Seagull Drive private access, and approximately 250 feet from the Deale public access. Now, we all know, visitors, where they're going to go, I see you, Mr. Smith, they're going to use whatever access is closest to them. So, I contend that the private access should be eliminated, Seagull, and let's take a look and be very thoughtful for all the public accesses and keep this in mind, because I'm not opposed to the parking, but I'm opposed to people using my private access and not paying for it. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, one last thing, because I have some residents here. We sent out surveys after the very lively town meeting last time, and 33 surveys were sent to the residents on Seagull who were not returned. One was in favor of Seagull being included, and 28 are currently opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Obviously, we have a little problem with the phones ringing and so forth. I would ask you to please turn your electronic devices off that make any noises. Amy White?
Hello, I'm Amy White, 126 Greensboro Street. First of all, I want to thank you for calling this special meeting to address once again the concerns of the taxpayers of Holden Beach, and I'd like to thank you for the effort that the Board of Commissioners is expending on this particular proposal. Last week, I spoke about my concerns regarding parking on the marsh streets, and I want to reiterate that this week. I'm strongly opposed to any parking on marsh streets, paid or otherwise. Those particular streets, Scotch Bonnet, Greensboro, Sand Dollar, Sailfish, Swordfish, and the 800 block of O B W. Now, I know we already have parking in these particular areas, that's why I'm so vehemently opposed, because I've seen what's happened with the mess that the people and vehicles leave behind and the ongoing damage that's been caused. With the elimination of these areas, the parking in these areas that I mentioned, there would be an insignificant impact to the overall paid parking proposal, and yet, if these areas are included in the proposal, the impact on the natural beauty of our community has the potential for significant impact. I respectfully ask that the Commissioners, at a minimum, eliminate paid parking on the marshes, and certainly not running the length of the marsh streets. I'd also like to request that the Commissioners consider how a possible discount plan for certain segments could be implemented, including but not limited exclusively to our senior citizens or physically disabled, and our veterans, those living both on the island and on the mainland. I think the fees that we're asking people to pay are excessive for a number of people in our community as a whole, and I'm not speaking about the island, but I am speaking about people on the mainland who do have a right to access the beach. I think it's fair for us to ask them to contribute to the costs that are incurred by them visiting the beaches, but I would like to see a revision made on the fee schedule. Thank you, I appreciate your time. In general, as I said, just to reiterate, I am in support of paid parking, but not on the marsh streets, not in front of homes, and certainly not where there's no public access. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia Pate?
My name is Sylvia Pate. I live at 264 Ocean Boulevard West. My family's owned a home and lots at Holden Beach since 1968, and in fact, it's my understanding that our house is the oldest, second oldest house at Holden Beach still. We're one of the few beach cottages that still sits on the ground, and all around us are all these big homes that have grown, and you know, I guess it's the prosperity and those types of things, but you know, we still live in our little beach cottage, and we love it. I've been coming here since 1992, and I consider it my primary residence, and I grew up in Myrtle Beach, and I can assure you that you don't want our area to become like Myrtle Beach. Now, I can say that, but I don't want anybody else talking about my hometown. But as a local Realtor, I can attest to the fact that Brunswick County has grown and has grown exponentially, as has Holden Beach grown exponentially since I've been coming here in 92, and it's going to continue to grow, and as we deal with that growth, it puts a burden on our local services and public facilities that we have to provide for the constituents that live here and also the visitors that come here. So, though we don't like it, it's just a fact of life, unfortunately, I'm feeling. But I go to all the beaches in Brunswick County all the time, you know, showing houses and selling real estate, and each beach is new, is very unique in Brunswick County, and I like that, and I think Holden Beach is especially unique, and I think it's very difficult for us to start comparing Holden Beach to Sunset Beach and Ocean Isle Beach and Topsail Beach and Surf City and whatever beach you want to compare it to, because it's different, and that's what I like about it, and I hope that's what all you guys like about it. But Holden Beach and the other beaches are just only so big, and when you can only cram just so many cars into the parking spots that we have available. I feel like that when the Commissioners first started with this approach of trying to design a plan for parking, that they were trying to create a plan that would create more parking for everybody so that everybody could come and enjoy the wonderful beach that's here. But unfortunately, you know, with that trying to create parking, there's a price that comes with that, and unfortunately, it's paid parking. And while I don't like it, and I hate it that people are going to have to pay to park, I mean, I'm going to have to pay too, and I want to go down to the east end and go sailing, but you know, if I have to do it, I have to do it. But somewhere along the line, though, it feels like to me that the plan went just a little bit awry and got maybe a little bit too big, and we got the pier property thrown into the parking concept and all that, and maybe we got a little bit out of where we needed to be. But I feel like, and I support paid parking, and I feel like what we need to do, though, is kind of ease into this paid parking concept, maybe on a gradual basis, and not rush into it to try to create the maximum number of spots there are at Holden Beach. I'd like to express my appreciation to the Commissioners for their willingness to step up to the plate and represent Holden Beach in doing so. They've put themselves in a position where, you know, they're going to get the wrath of the public, and I feel like our island is unique, unlike most that I've visited, and it breaks my heart to see there's so much dissension among the folks that live on the island and the mainland currently. We need to all come together and figure out a way to make things work. No decision, no solution is going to make everyone happy, but there has to be common ground, give and take. It can't be my highway, my way or the highway. Thank you, Commissioners.
Lynn Holden?
My name is Lynn Holden, and I live in 110 Mullet Street, down in the L S Holden subdivision, and I'm concerned about two streets there, the Ranger Street and the Elizabeth Street. Right now, it's set up for the bikes and wagons and golf carts, and I'd like to keep it to those two streets and that idea. The reason is, my grandfather, when he divided that property up, I'm talking about the section between Bendigo Street and Ferry Street, he had 12 accesses in that 1,500 feet. between Bendigo Street and Ferry Street, he had 12 accesses in that 1,500 feet on the beach. There was an access beside each house on the oceanfront. And the people who bought property back in that development, the original deeds had stated that those accesses were for the people in the LS Holden subdivision. That was in the first deeds that came out. They sold the property because we had so many accesses in that area, and people liked that. So, I'm not against the parking. I think sometimes it's gone too far. But I would like to have two streets there to continue doing what they're doing. Because my grandfather, who set that up, he would be upset if his great-grandchildren and grandchildren could not get to Holden Beach without going through all those cars in the front. Because those people that live there, they're different from the people who come over there. The people who come over here, we're welcome. We don't try to keep them off. But they're there all day. Those people who live in that development, they go to the beach for two or three hours and they come back. But after 8:00 or 8:30 in the morning, in the summertime, there's no way for the people who own property in that development to go there. They have to walk up there, and it's not right. Thank you very much, and I want to thank the Board for their good service. Thank you.[682.29][682.29](APPLAUSE).
Ava Palethorpe?
Thank you. I'm not going to belabor the point. I am an heir. My middle name is Holden. My father was the youngest. And what my cousin Lynn is talking about is something that's been set up for over 50 years, and it's been in place. And I don't think that it's right for the homeowners or property owners to have to be profaned, to have to pick up condoms, to have to pick up trash and other things. I have grandchildren, and my grandchildren are of the age they can pull a wagon. I was told by somebody that parked there a couple of years ago that if I didn't get the F out, he would take my wagon and run over it. Now, I have rights, and you all have rights, the Commissioners have rights. We're supposed to live in a democratic world. I don't feel that I'm asking too much for the town to be very careful in what they pick up in the way of picking up streets to use for parking. Let me say one last thing before my time runs out. My father was a commercial airline pilot. We've lived all over the East Coast. We've lived on Long Island, New York. We've lived in Virginia. We've lived, I now have a home in Annapolis, Maryland. And I can tell you, I've been to Ocean City, Maryland, I've been to Rehoboth Beach, I've been to Fire Island. And back in the 60s, on Fire Island, we couldn't even go to Fire Island for a day at the beach. We had to pay for a ferry service. When we got to Fire Island, we had to pay another fee. And what they did in Fire Island was, they centralized the parking. And we have a perfect location here at the bridge area. But I'm going to be very honest with you, some of the day trippers are not very nice out on the strand either. And so, nobody wants to deny anybody access to the beach. But if you talk about this being a family beach, why don't you think about the concept of what family is? It's not F this, I'm going to kick your A double S, get that you-know-what out of the way. This is not a family beach. I don't want my grandchildren around that. Because we don't conduct ourselves that way. And I think that we're losing it if we rush into this parking thing. I think we should have paid parking. In Annapolis, Maryland, I can't launch my boat without a day fee. It can be the smallest cove on the Magathie River in Maryland, and I have to pay a fee. I don't think we should get free lunches in life, because there are no free lunches. Everything has a price. And I think if you want to maintain the integrity of the island and the history of it, then that's what we need to work on as well. One last point. The history of the island, the West End, was developed by the other side of the family. Wasn't developed by my grandfather. That side of the family utilized a contractor out of South Carolina to set up their accessways and their canals. So, you need to understand there were two sides to the family, and that's why one end is different than the other. We have too much parking at the East End. It's terrible. It's absolutely terrible.
Thank you, ma'am.[890.12][890.12](APPLAUSE). Tracy Thomas?
Hi, Tracy Thomas, 109 Friggit. I just wanted to say a few points. That I support paid parking on Holden Beach. I do not support paid parking at private walkways. I do not support purchasing more property to create parking. I do not support excessive parking of 935 spots. And I think that Holden Beach residents/taxpayers should have two free license plates to compensate us for the taxes that we pay for the parking. And I just want to say that I think that 3.3 million is a very expensive parking lot for the pier.[942.18][942.18](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, ma'am. Becky Green?
Becky Green, 115 Sunshine Lane. I just wanted to reiterate that I am in favor of paid parking if it is reasonably priced. But I am against paid parking on streets with private walkways. There's no access for people using these parking spaces without trespassing on private walkways. And the property is deeded to the property owners on these streets, and the walkways are constructed and maintained by the homeowners on those streets. That's all I have to say.[988.16][988.16](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Ms. Green. Keith Smith?
Hello, my name is Keith Smith. I'm at 105 Durham Street. Mine's a little different in the sense that everybody's touched on the right-of-ways and all of that, and I kind of agree with those things. But I kind of went through the RFP and the parking proposal by auto, and just kind of went line by line. And so, here's some of the notes that I had. The parking proposal indicates that they'd need 500 spaces at a minimum to use auto. I did speak to Mr. Varnum, and he said while 500 is not a hard number, he did say if we go below that number, the percentage is going to increase. So, instead of 30%, it might be 35. And he, based on my conversation, he would know the number right off. On page eight of the RFP, I'm just kind of going to go through. It talks about the parking rates. There is an auto upgrade feature of the system that can be elected. I would recommend that we auto upgrade. What that allows it to do is, somebody pays $20 so many different times during a week, they automatically will be upgraded to the $80 fee. And if they pay up to 200, if they park 13 days, they would automatically be upgraded. And he said he's implementing a, I don't know if it's available now, but they automatically did that for North Topsail, and they had about 10 or 12 out of 25,000 registered, 50,000 registered users. So, it's not a big deal, but it is a nice feature. I think it would go a long way in public perception that we're money hungry, that you automatically get an upgrade and don't have to kind of get it. And you'd also get a notification on your app if he gets that approved. So, you wouldn't have to apply for it. The enforcement, the designated space in the parking area, I did like the fact that you can move between the parking spaces as long as it's the same kind. You wouldn't have to pay additional fee if you moved throughout the day. On page nine of the RFP, it says the value of the Surf Cast and endorsement, that's their response. Entire town enforcement, not just designated parking areas. I do have a concern, will they police private property? I'm not in favor of that. I recommend that enforcement be for the designated parking areas only, and let the police handle the other infractions as they do now. On page 10, there was a policy statement from Holden Beach in the RFP that said all parkers will be subject, all parkers will be subject to the parking fees, including residents, owners, visitors, and others. I ask that they make a revision of that. That I recommend that each property owner be given two annual permits to park in the public parking areas as they already pay for those services that we're attempting to recoup. This program is implemented by North Topsail and administered and verified through the utility billing system. So, if you get a utility bill on the island, you get two free parking spaces, and you can verify that through their app, I believe. Page 20, the town, I'm going fast, I've got three minutes. Town's flexibility, the town may adjust the geographic, that doesn't matter. That doesn't matter. Page 21, parking facilities are usually maintained by the town's public works department. I did want to clarify that the town is going to maintain the ground and the signage, not split. In other words, the town would maintain the ground of the parking and the signage, and that was confirmed by Mr. Varnum. On technical requirements, this is, you guys put out on the RFP that you required at least five years' experience. By their own admission, they only have two years' experience. I don't know how important that is to you. That caused an issue for me, so I kind of researched some of them. And the town of North Topsail, their comment was, they underpromised and overdelivered.
Thank you, sir.
So, I recommend auto.[1197.74][1197.74](APPLAUSE).
Elaine Jordan?
Good afternoon, Elaine Jordan, 124 Sand Dollar. Public parking is an issue, and the potential for more problems is greater as our wonderful beach becomes more known, more publicized. We're not trying to keep the public off the island. We're not trying to exclude anyone. As with anything, it's a balance of private property rights versus public need. Some of the urgency seems to have been driven by the purchase of the pier and the financing of that. I think they should be standing alone. Public parking is a need. I haven't heard anyone be totally against paid parking. It's really a matter of where, the cost, and the ordinances that go along with that. In my opinion, public parking should be in commercial areas, not in residential areas. 3A on the agenda, finalization of parking places. It's simply premature today. The Commissioners voted for a jurisdictional determination of marsh. You're going to need to wait for that, and that's going to take some time in order to determine what parking is available on those areas, if it's even available, much less, and then talk about other numbers. I'd be very interested, I've heard comments about, well, we have to have so much public parking, or so many public accesses, in order to keep our beach re-nourishment. I want the specifics of that. I want to know exactly what the requirements are, by whom. Is it, how many feet apart? How many? I'd like to know the very specifics of that, because if we don't know the specifics of that, and we're going just on innuendo or speculation, that's not the way considered decisions should be made. Lastly, I would like to know if the town has considered selling the parcels, for example, in the block 800, in this really hot residential market. Selling those spots that, to me, are not consistent with public use, use them and use the monies in order to buy spots in the commercial area. Thank you.[1355.92][1355.92](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Mayor, may I answer a question?
I can't be debated, but you can answer questions.
I can answer. I don't want to debate, I just want to answer a question. The Army Corps of Engineers has very clear rules for the... What? The Army Corps of Engineers has very clear rules for how far apart beach accesses need to be in a project area, and how many parking spaces at minimum must be within a quarter mile of each of those spaces. They also have a procedure that, once they determine what a coastal plan would be, they would then do a calculation of cost benefit and come up with a number of what I would call peak spaces that the island has to have. But at the first step is, you have to have accesses every half-mile in the project area, and you have to have, and the Wilmington District has documents on this, you're supposed to have 10 parking spaces within a quarter of a mile of each of those accesses. That's not all you have to have, but that's a requirement. And then, there will be the number calculated for your peak number that you have to have on your island for the project area. So, as we go through everything, and we start to knock out, don't put parking here, don't put parking there, remember, there is a 10 parking places within a quarter mile of the beach accesses in the project area.
Does that need to be given out in the balance of the...
Excuse me, if you Google, you will find it. That's how I find things. That is my research.
But Steve, I do not have those requirements, and that's what we're doing for our beach nourishment right now.
We are not debating.
I know, but if you're going to say facts, I'm going to say facts.
Okay, 116 Marsh Walk, Craig?
Craig Bromby, 116 Marsh Walk. I've made comments before and submitted them, and I just commend them to your attention. But one item that I have not seen addressed, and I'm not even sure it's still in the proposal, but in the agenda, or the ordinance as was appearing on the website, had changed the designation of low-speed vehicles to compact. And my concern there is that visitors looking for parking places are not going to make distinctions, and not going to look at the definition of what compact is. And if you've ever been in a parking deck and seen compact-only spaces, you know this is true. The only vehicle I have never seen in a compact vehicle space is a Hummer. Every other type of vehicle I've seen. Now, the lady from Seagull made, I thought, put this very succinctly. The ordinance has the nuts and bolts apparently correct, and I think that most everybody is in support of public parking, but the substance gives me some concern. Auto Connect, I was imagining, I was assuming that their charge was how many, and this is specifically with respect to LSV spaces, how many of those can be placed within a reasonable distance from the beach or from a public access? But they had no other standard. It was how many and where could they put them? And then, they provided all these spaces, 304 LSV spaces, now we're thinking about compacts, and however many other parking places. And they left it to the Board to decide what fraction of those should actually be established based on what was right, what was appropriate for Holden Beach. I think they were probably astonished when every one of them was included. So, I believe that public parking, paid public parking, it has very wide support. But I think we need to go back to this ordinance and look at it with a great deal more thoughtfulness about where these things really are appropriately. And one other comment I have on the Corps of Engineers' rules is, I'm a little skeptical these are actually rules. I have a feeling some of these are guidance. And there's a huge gulf in difference between guidance and rule.[1645.14][1645.14](APPLAUSE).
Brian Decker?
Brian Decker, 121 Sunshine Lane. Glad to see you all. My neighbors came up here again. As I mentioned last week, the last meeting, my wife and I moved down here, went to the West End, and we purposely picked that area because of the peace and the quiet, the family atmosphere that we proudly proclaim and certainly want to keep. And our fear is, as so many people have already said, packing so many parking spots, whether you call them compact or any other acronym, where there's so little public access is just beyond the pale. And I just can't wrap my head around the need for so many parking spots, whatever that number has been proposed. And I know it hasn't been, you know, defined yet, or a final decision made on how many. But again, as everybody has said, looking at where there's public access should be really important as far as where the final determination of these are, so that we don't get additional problems, which I certainly think will happen. And as I mentioned before, you know, wanting to keep this family atmosphere, family, invite visitors, let them enjoy the wonderful life and beach we have down here, but don't turn this island into a used car parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you.[1748.82][1748.82](APPLAUSE). I got it. S. Will? 1166 OBW.
I'd like to point out that a lot of people still haven't brought up one very important thing. If you park cars on both sides of the road, how's the fire truck going to access that road? And how far back are those signs that all say no parking from here to corner at 250 feet? Now, you're going to put cars within 10 feet of the intersection. And have we talked to the police commissioner, or the captain, or anybody, how the trucks are going to make those turns if you put cars there? Because you know it's not going to... Because you know it's not going to just be golf carts, because renters don't care. So we need to really look at that, because nobody else here, but I didn't buy my house to have it turned into a parking lot. Thank you.
Ryan from 842 OBW.
I live at 842 Ocean Boulevard West. The woman that spoke earlier about protecting the marsh, I agree 100% wholeheartedly, but that also applies to Ocean Boulevard West. In order to put the 16 parking spots in the area of the early 800s is going to annihilate property that has been owned by the animals there for longer than any of us have lived on this island. It will displace possibly a family of deer that I know from my backyard and watching them bed down in that area. And the trade-off is, just doesn't seem worth it. For at least six months out of the year, those parking lots will be empty. And to destroy that natural beauty of our marsh, I have a hard time going along with it. And another aspect of that property, or the parking space of H-19, is the traffic consideration. People coming out, trying to back out on Ocean Boulevard West, where people come from the west, will have to, it will stop traffic, in both directions. In order, it's not so, it's not quite like where the pier is, because you've already made that left turn into the parking area, and you get out, you're making a right turn. Can't quite do that on Ocean Boulevard West. And especially if you front-end parking, trying to back out, you have the sidewalk to consider, bicyclists, pedestrians, traffic going east, traffic coming west. I just see it as a bad idea. And if I may just add one other thing, this has nothing to do with parking, but two doors down from me, on a lot half the size of this room, is going a two-bedroom house. I fail to see, on Ocean Boulevard West, on the second row, and then that doesn't even begin to get me started on the lots, or the houses going up by the pump station on Greensboro, near Greensboro. So, thank you.
John Pierce.
Benefit of going at this point is that so much has already been said, which is good. I've been coming in 30-something years, many of you have. I've seen cars park everywhere. They come here because they like it, they're going to keep coming because they like it, and they park anywhere, they park, they find a place to park. They're doing it this summer like they have for 30-something years, and to me, it's, I think everyone agrees, some kind of monetization of that space or that asset makes a lot of sense. So I don't think there's a lot of debate about how to, that we need paid parking. One of the things I just made a comment on, thinking about all the parking spaces that we might come up with, I don't know what the number is now at 900, whatever that number is, it's always easier to add spaces than it is take it away. So I don't know if you want to consider, I know someone mentioned auto has to have 500, but I don't know if you want to consider scaling it back. This discussion and a lot of concern about paving the island as a parking lot, and I think I commented on it last time. By the way, the last meeting was brutal. I almost wore a helmet today, but I didn't. But you know, it's almost a little bit counterintuitive for me to think that all these people have come here, and they've been coming, and for them, all of a sudden to say, "Oh, gosh, they're going to charge me for coming. I think I'll go more." I don't know that they'll do that. I think there's a little overstatement there, although I know it may impact certain areas. So I think the real key is getting the plan right, and realizing that as a town, and I applaud you on your work, by the way, I think it's been detailed, maybe over-aggressive at the beginning, but I think we're correcting it now. But I do believe that the ability to change it, maybe scale it up, certainly edit it as we go through time, is always an option. And the one thing that really stands out, now we have these little things, purple, I think, this year, that let us on the island as owners. We could convert that into some way to show that we are residents, and we don't need to be charged again for the right to park here on some of these places. I really like the idea of getting into the more granular seniors, handicapped, et cetera. Some of these rate structures might be looked at. And again, just going back to home in on the owners, we pay for a lot, and I'm not sure that we need to be paying at the same rate as other people for the right to park on certain areas of the island. Other than that, I think the board's done a good job, and I appreciate the spirit of today's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Parfus.
I'm Rick Parfus, 140 Tarpon Drive. Heard a lot of good comments today on parking. I'm in favor of a parking plan. We need to control the parking. I think paid parking's a good idea. I'd like to thank Commissioner Kwiatkowski for coming up with some good compromise scenarios that'll hopefully be daylighted today later in discussions. Couple of those scenarios are pretty reasonable to me. It's also my understanding the board is going to be discussing possibly acquiring Block Q, which is down by the bridge, and I'm in favor of that as well. If it's going to be a parking lot most of the time, then that needs to be put into the parking plan. Any other properties that you may be considering for parking purposes that you want to buy, I think need to be included in this plan. Now, when there is a final plan put together, I would like to see the town use every tool available to get it out to everybody. This includes, you know, Alan, you put out your emails from the desk of the mayor, there is the town newsletters. I think we need to have it out there for a couple of weeks for people to digest. And then at your next meeting, where you actually want to take some action, people don't find out it two days beforehand and get their dander up. I mean, we're all in this together. It's a hot topic. It really is. Look at this. I've never seen this many people here. One other thing I would request, if possible, when you go into executive sessions to discuss certain land acquisitions, could we get a little more information on it? I know there's financial sensitivities here, but for Block Q, you could say we're entertaining discussions for acquisition of Block Q for the purpose of parking, for the purpose of festivals, or whatever, so we have some idea of what those discussions are and what the intended purpose of those purchases are. Often, we send something to Heather and say, "Hey, what parcels are they?", and we have to go hunting around to figure out where they are, and we still don't know what they're for. So I think that would be a good thing to do, if it doesn't cause a problem when you're negotiating these things. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Bob Bean.
Bob Bean, 1186 Ocean Boulevard. The last meeting, I spoke about my displeasure with the parking and the right-of-ways, and I don't really want to focus. Let's go with this. 1186 Bob Bean. Last meeting, I spoke about my displeasure with parking and the right-of-ways. I don't want to go back over that part. One thing that I would appreciate, because I've had a little trouble trying to match up what we're trying to do with the parking, I know that sounds a little bit silly, but I tried to think in terms, and maybe it's in an RFP, maybe it's in something I haven't read, but I was trying to understand what the problems are. If we're trying to, you know, raise fees to have adequate toilets, showers, litter pickup, et cetera, in the existing parking, that could be, that could be something. Are we, but these have different answers. Are we trying to maximize revenue because we want to use that for debt service related to the pier or something else? Because that might give a different answer, but I might understand, you know, why we would litter them all over the island or something like that. Or we just, you know, are we just following auto? If we, if there's something related to that beach nourishment that I don't understand, that might cause for why we put one in a different place, but I think that might help the audience understand what's going on. I saw in the auto proposal, they said something about reducing golf cart traffic by placing the parking places. That's silly. It'll do the opposite, it'll attract traffic. So that might be something in the report, but I don't understand. If that's a goal for reducing it, I don't think this is the answer to it, but if it is, I'd love to understand that. If we're just trying to be a good neighbor to the mainland and have as much parking as we can, if that's the goal, I'd like to understand that. That doesn't necessarily say paid parking, that says we want as much parking as we can. How can we go about that? But I think some of the, you know, to be a good neighbor, you also have to look at your constituents and say, "What's good for the constituents?". And it may be that we, you know, there's always going to be more demand, and they're building more across the, across the bridge, there'll be more demand. I don't think you'll ever satisfy it, so it's how do we go about providing what we can? And to me, that says, put stuff in commercial areas, take advantage of the existing parking that we have. If you, I even read the comments online about people that are upset because it's going to be paid parking. You know, they want to stay at the beach, and I understand that. But if the revenue source is what we're trying to solve, then I get that piece. If we're trying to solve demand, then maybe you ration the resource. You know, if I, I don't know if their app will do it, because I haven't pulled it up, but if you can limit parking for the existing spaces that we have, but you only get three or four hours a day, well, then I got turnover. In essence, I've got twice the number of parking places for the existing spaces that I'm using. I'm out of time, so I'll get that, but I'd love to hear that part.
Thank you, sir. Joe Utley.
I'm a trucker, piker, sailor, mainlander, and I've been coming to this beach for 65 years. My house is about miles, crow flies this way. I'm in favor of paid parking and keeping it, I wouldn't say build a truck stop, but point people to a parking area, instead of having it all up and down, more congregated. And I'm in favor of the wildlife. I bring deer corn over to this area. Would like for the considerations to be made for old seniors, handicaps, military discounts, even. I was drafted in 1971. And more handicap parking. And that's pretty much all I've got to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Don Braswell.
I'm Don Braswell, 135 Tuna Drive. And we understand the need for public parking, but we are against parking on the canal streets in those highly residential areas. We think the public parking, paid parking, should be reserved to the bridge area and in the common areas that the town owns. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Patty Braswell.
I'm just going to add to what he said about parking people. Hi, I'm Patty Braswell, 135 Tuna Drive, and I just wanted to add to what somebody said a few minutes ago about people driving up and down the beach, looking for places to park all over the place. We already are concerned about visitors and residents, our children, our grandchildren crossing the road, out in the street playing. And then when you think about bringing all these day visitors down the canal streets and down Ocean Boulevard looking for parking, they're not looking for people crossing the road, or for children out playing, things like that, and I think that's something nobody's thought of. We need to really think about that. And keep it centralized.
Thank you, ma'am. John Williams.
John Williams, 136 Durham Street, now street across from the pier. Thank you all for your time and your service. I didn't come here today to speak about my own constraints, but more for others that I've spoken to and people in my community. My family and I have been coming here, own property here for the last 40 years. And Holden Beach has always been a family beach. That's the way I've always described it to anyone that I've had the pleasure to meet and tell them about this wonderful place. I travel all over North America, and it's amazing how many people know about this place and come here. I can tell you that. It's really amazing. As an aside, I never had anyone tell me they hated the parking here. It was never part of our discussion. So with the acquisition of the pier and the subsequent way to pay for it, I think we're trading one problem for another here, at least partially. And I would ask that we please don't change the parking and the right-of-way for homeowners in a way that affects the taxpayers of this community. Taxpayers should be entitled to the peaceful enjoyment of their property, right-of-way included. And I would like us to make the appropriate parking available, paid or free, you know, find a way to keep the funding, as other people have mentioned, this beach nourishment, or whatever those needs are, but don't feed this monster, because it's hard to undo things once you do it. And no one wants to have strangers parking outside their home. You know, no one on my street would want that. And please keep Holden Beach a family beach and put the taxpayers first in all decision-making processes. I would rather pay more taxes or scrap the pier project altogether before we change the feel of this community. And Holden Beach is a wonderful place. I hope and pray we can keep it that way and put homeowners first. We come here and buy here and stay here because this area is devoid of these types of things. And thank you for your time.
Yeah, I'm about to freeze.
Is anybody too warm? The bird's teeth are chapped. If it gets too much cold, we can hang haws. Is anybody too hot?
On behalf of the town and the commissioners, thank all of you for speaking. That does conclude our speaker's list, and at this point in time, we'll go to number three on the agenda and begin the discussion process. Again, appreciate everyone's input. It's now time for the commissioners to speak, and you're welcome to stay and listen, and then we'll be going into an executive session following that before we adjourn. All right, commissioners, you've got the agenda before you, as you requested. Who wants to speak, or how do you want to do this?
Start with you, Pat.
I, you know, I, I spoke at the December meeting, I spoke at the last meeting about the need... I, you know, I, I spoke at the December meeting, I spoke at the last meeting about the need for a special meeting so that we could hammer out exactly what we want to do. Auto Connect did basically what they were asked to do, which was identify every potential parking space. It was then up to the committee to decide what to give to the commissioners and ultimately the commissioners to make the decisions. Everybody's hung up on this number of 900 and some. Frankly, it's just because after two months, we still haven't done our job of whittling it down. We started at the last meeting and we called a special meeting because it wasn't going to get done in one sit-down. And again, we had a marathon meeting last time of five hours without finishing parking. So this is a working meeting for us to try to come to grips with what we want to put forward at the February BOCM as a proposal. We cannot approve an ordinance or a resolution today because those have to be reduced to writing before commissioners can vote on a final decision. So I don't want anybody to think that today's meeting was to make final decisions and ramrod something through, okay? But we have to have a working session here. So to try to help the board along, and this does not reflect my decision-making, I just created three scenarios that I hope we can talk to and work from. The first one is not very far from where we were when I proposed that we cut down the number of golf carts on all the canal streets to four instead of most of them having 10 and take away parking, any LSV parking on any side street that has its own private access right across the street from it. And I think we all agreed that last time, that that was a good start. But that's just, that's just a start, okay? All of this is going to be about compromise to some extent because we're not going to make everybody happy. But we're trying to do what is best to, in my mind as well, I heard one person from the east side say, we have so much here. I have thought for years, we've got to do what we can to spread things out a bit, okay? Now, in the proposals or in the tables I provided to the commissioners and staff, I have excluded lots that I do not feel 100% confident we will have control of on April 1st. So the 800 block is not part of the, the tables and the pier is not part of the, of the tables. I'm not confident we'll have those under our control April 1st. So from the very beginning, there are essentially 100 spaces that were in the auto report and they were lot spaces, off-road lots. Those are gone. So I would simply like for the commissioners to talk through, and I don't care which scenario you want to start with, if you, or if you just want to say, let's talk from scenario one and make decisions, are there some more things that need to be removed? We removed H65, or I removed H65 based on Commissioners Murdoch, Murdoch's recommendation at the BOCM, and that's that dirt road OBE stretch that was being referred to. I personally recommended in my table that on McCray Street, we take, we take the south side off and only leave the north side because you start parking on both sides and you get into real traffic issues. I mean, just traffic moving back and forth. Again, it's trying to come up with the best possible way for us at this point in time to give people parking, not, not 900 spaces. I think we've said for a long time, you know, 600 spaces was a target. I remind everybody that when you look at our land use plan, right now, there's over, I believe it's over 700 parking spaces hypothesized in that land use plan that was approved by the board, was written by the community, Citizens Group, and that was based on lots and the fact that you can park in the right of way. So we're trying to bring control, we're trying to actually reduce that hypothetical number, okay? Otto, he, he identified every possible place, now we have to reduce it. So I'm going to leave it to commissioners now to start talking about where you think, and probably it's easiest to just work from scenario one, where you think things might be better to be reduced. If I've taken something out that concerns you, speak up as well. I'm, I'm not trying to run this meeting, I'm happy to facilitate it, but I would really like it if we would come up with a final list of what we're proposing is a reasonable plan. And I will tell you that my most, my most stringent scenario leaves us with 507 full-size parking places, 50 golf carts, all on the east side, okay? I mean, all the golf carts are on the east side because took out every golf cart on the canal streets, they don't want it, okay? So what you end up with in my most stringent is almost 89% of the identified parking is east of Town Hall. I have never thought it is right. The most liberal case, without having a pier property in here as a confirmed, without proposing anything else, my most liberal has 78.7% of the parking spaces east of Town Hall. And this, these are just the facts, okay? And that most liberal does allow golf carts, LSVs, not compact, on the canal streets that are serviced by public accesses. And that took the count to not 10 per street, but four, based on the information we received from canal street owners, however many it was, but there are canal street owners who live far back on their streets, who did want to be able to park a golf cart on their street closer to OBW. Okay? So we're trying to please everybody here and I don't think we're pleasing anybody, so nobody should feel put upon because nobody's happy. But we've got it, we've got to work this out. We just got to work this out. And for the people who are asking about, you know, sort of, is just trying to make revenue driving all this, we started this process a year ago. Two commissioners asked if they could have a small effort at parking. Woody Tyner was one who has left, Commissioner Murdoch was the other. And at that point, it didn't start for anything other than recouping expenses for tourism, which did have to do with trash, bathrooms, the cost of extra police, the beach rangers, you know, all sorts of things. So no, this wasn't a big money grab. It was not, it was never meant to be a big money grab. And it did morph, believe me, it did morph. But there has always been the core of try to make back revenue that we are spending as a town for having our guests come and use our facilities that we pay for. So I hope that answers what the purpose of this is at the very base. If we can have more revenue that we can apply to other things, that is an add-on. But we do have certain significant costs that we want to cover.
May I break to a call?
No, ma'am.
And ask the question?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. I'm sorry.
So how do we want to proceed, commissioners?
Can we go, can we go start with the zones that are organizing the agenda and I guess each of us give a feedback, including your proposal?
Can we, Pam, Pat, I'm so sorry. I've looked at this also and your, your proposals, scenarios are...
Mike, talk to Mike.
Your proposals, scenarios are, are very helpful, but there are still some locations where, that I think they need to be reduced somewhat more. The, the thing that I want to make sure that's clear, that we want to, to rename the compact car. There is no compact car that's 110 inches long. We need to just simply put either golf cart slash LS, LSV, low-speed vehicle, or vice versa. So you designate, that's what it's got to be. If, as far as the side-by-sides and the razors and all that stuff, they can park in a full-size parking lot. There's not enough of them that's going to, that would muddy the water for the, everybody else. I think that would be the best way to go. I know that's what we were intending, but the side-by-sides are a little bit bigger and they can, as far as parking is concerned, use a full-size parking space, not what's designated for the, the LSVs on these, on these town streets. Now, reducing them down to four, Pat, that, that was excellent. I thought that was it. And you've got to understand that, you know, when Ty, Woody left, I took his place with Brian on the parking committee. Rick Patterson was on there with, with us. I mean, we, I, I thought was that if you lived on one of the long canal streets, that you would want to pack the kids up and your stuff and go to the beach, you could take your golf cart up there, leave it carefully, walk across the street with your children and, and go to the beach and then have your ride back home. That was the intent. It wasn't the intent at all for day trippers. That, that, really a day tripper, how in the world are they going to come across the bridge on a golf cart and make it back? And, and the, the thing about having the, the parking on the marshes, you know, that we've got 10s down here, I think maybe five would be better. And then again, that's contingent on us getting approval to park on the, the marsh sites. Again, what Brian has, has said all along, as well as my thoughts, is to, it's, it's some way completely eliminate right-of-way parking. That way, we don't have to talk about post and rots. They won't be needed. You can't park there. The, the LSVs now, or golf carts at the end of the road, those are for the, for the, for the people that live here, more than anything else is what, is what I'm thinking about. So, and to do this, to eliminate this, not that we want to eliminate it or, or we've got to have a trade-off just to make money, but we need some place for these people to go west of Town Hall. And, and that is my only thoughts for having an emergency exit out onto the beach in case someone in that area is, in the middle of the island has an issue. And number two, there's, there's 80 parking spaces there with a big public access for the people that want to come visit, instead of trying to find a place on your street, in your driveway, under somebody's house, to, to do it there. So, you know, we, we, we had a whole lot here on the table at one time and, you know, I'm not trying to justify anything, but it just, for the end game, as, as Mr. Murdoch and I have talked before, is to eliminate parking in front of your houses. That's, that's not what we want. But in the meantime, we're going to try to get this reduced and, and Pat has done a wonderful job with these scenarios here. Number one looks to be the best, which pretty much from Deal Street West is pretty much we're going to eliminate the parking. She still had Seagull in there and I did hear some issues that you didn't want any parking on Seagull and that could be removed also. But this parking plan is fluid. In other words, we, we, we kind of let, we kind of gave Otto maybe a little bit too much rope and he hung us out. But, but he was, again, we asked him to locate all the parking places. Well, by gosh, she located them all and y'all saw that, which was, Brian and I looked at each other when they said 900, what? You know, we never, you know, four, five to 600 is what we had in mind and that included a pier. So that, that's, you know, what we were, we're shooting at, but we've got to basically start somewhere. If we, if you petition your street or whatever, that you don't want any parking on that street and everybody's in agreement with it, that you don't even want golf carts allowed there on some of the shorter streets, fine, then come back to us and, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, Jim's probably in a room somewhere, that we can, there you are, hiding behind the mask, we can adjust this as, as we move forward. Is that correct? So, you know, we, we, we put up a parking sign, you can park four LSVs at the end of your road and everybody says, nope, we, everybody on the street says, no, we want to do that, those signs can be removed. It's, it's one of those things that I understand what you're saying and we are listening, you know, but you've got to also understand that we put a lot of thought and effort, lost sleep, trying to figure out a way to make, you know, the parking work. Again, the visitors that come here, we cannot stop them. We cannot put a gate on the bridge to stop them from coming. So they're coming, but we need to kind of guide them to where they need to be and we need to be able to take care of the mess they leave. It's as easy as I can put it. You know, they, they, like you say, stop at the food line and that's what I find on the beach a lot, is where there's stuff they've left and they try to half bury it, so it's, it, or they, it's up and down the, the street, so it's, it's, us as a town need to be able to recoup some of that. So going as, as you suggested, Paige, maybe line item at a time, using her scenario.
Right. I would use that scenario.
Versus what we have here.
Like for, we could start with the sheet in the agenda that says H01 to H08. We've already said we're eliminating those, correct?
Well, no, we're still going to have Deal Street because it has a public access.
That's H09.
No, okay, here we go. Here, here's again what I, what I go through all the time as I look at this, and believe me, I've looked at this a lot and I've been out on my bike a lot. But Deal Street, when you go one street on either side of a public access, it's reasonable to believe that people will go to the public access if you have a sign that points to public access. So I understand that Seagull and Seaside both have private accesses a block away, well, not quite a block away from their streets. And that's why in my first scenario, I left it in and I simply, well, I think of my first two. It's like direct H7 and H9 to Deal Public Access, so that they don't use the private access. So yes, we can, we can eliminate it, but I just want to say that I use that logic of one block away and you put a sign with an arrow, that's the direction of the public access and I think it'll be followed. But again, these aren't even for, these aren't even for off-island people because these are golf carts. So these should be for...
So H01 to H08?
No, H01 to H06 is gone.
Pat, can I say one thing?
Yes.
These golf cart parking spaces, they got called compact and everything else and they, they definitely, there was too many of them put on these streets. I was approached by several people, and I'm not going to call any names, but they have to, and we'll just say Heron Land or Swordfish or a community like that on the beach, for instance, it has to go a long way. It's a long walk to the beach. They expressed interest because they would always drive their golf carts up to the end of the street and park and get harassed by Frank or whoever's, you can't park there, you can't park there and you got to leave and give you a ticket. So they're like, it would be nice if we could have an unload, unloading zone at least to drop all our stuff off and then if we have to take the cart back to the house, then fine, but I thought, you know, it would be reasonable, as small as they are, and I know a ton of residents that live on canal streets that have golf carts and I also know a ton of visitors that come to the island, rent golf carts. It wouldn't be free, you'd have to pay, but we thought it was a good idea to put a couple at the end of those streets because of that reason. If somebody was handicapped or hurt or, you know, couldn't walk that far or whatever, they would have access to, to drive up there and park. So that's the reason behind these things. If you guys don't want them and if we have to go street by street with a survey, then that's what we need to do to get them removed or kept. Some streets might want them, some streets might not. They make sense on some streets, they don't on other streets. I think that's the way we need to do them, but at this point with the... But at this point, with the opposition that I'm hearing, Pat, I think we need to drop them to just a couple. Go from four to a couple, if that's the consensus of the public, because that's all they were for. They were for the residents on those streets. It wasn't for somebody at a campground to go over the bridge, drive all the way down there so they could park their golf cart, because they knew there was golf cart parking down there. That was never, ever our intention. So the LSV stuff is, it's all on the table for removal, as far as I'm concerned. I would be hesitant if I lived on one of those streets, especially the longer ones, to remove them. Just in case you're the one that's got a broke leg and can't make it up to the end of the street to go to the beach. I would, I would really consider it's not that big of a deal. But if you don't want them, we need to hear, uh, survey street by street, like you just provided on Seagull, or, or whoever, and we'll take them off.
And Paige, you're right. I, my numerical challenge when I'm doing tables continues. H O seven, H O eight, H O nine are supposed to be H O nine, H ten, H eleven. So I do mean Seagull, Deal, and Seaside, but they should be H nine, ten, eleven. You're right that we already ruled out through eight.
So H O one to H O eight?
Yeah, we already ruled those out, correct.
So we get to H O nine, H ten?
H ten, H eleven.
Commissioners, can I ask for some help? Um, a, as the administrator that, uh, that was insistent that the parking program be reduced to an ordinance format, um, if y'all are going to go through the table to exclude, um, areas, would you somehow phrase that as a consensus so that we can take that and make an administrative revision accordingly in order to capture the, uh, to capture accurately what, um, is proposed as a further draft of what you've got in front of you?
So we even need to make a motion to eliminate H O one to H O eight?
What if?
Second, yes.
Okay, let's make sure that, um, when these motions are passed, these are motions passed for working, the workshop process, not the finalization process. So we might come back to this, but temporarily, we're agreeing with this. Whatever, whatever the consensus may be.
So the motion was to remove the parking from H O one to H O eight zone?
Okay, so that's gonna leave Frigga? Should, well, that shouldn't be left, that, that should also go.
It's H O eight.
It's H O eight.
Frigga is H O eight.
Boy, I need my glasses.
Yeah?
Yes, it helps, I, I need a ruler.
So the motion was to remove the, uh, public parking from H O one, pay parking from H O one to H O eight?
Second.
All right, okay. Everybody, everybody understand what we're about to agree, or you're about to agree to?
Yes.
Not yet.
Yes, sir.
Geraldine, you with that?
Yes, I'm fine.
Uh, everybody's agreeable, okay. Mr. Town Manager, you got that?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Pat, so you're still for leaving Seagull, Deal, and Seaside?
I, I just...
We'll just do in this section, then we'll move to the next one.
Yeah, I, it's, I...
Hold on.
Let, let Paige keep going, and then we can discuss after she makes a motion.
Okay.
Doctor, you got the floor.
We're still waiting on that motion, right?
No, we've already got the consensus.
Okay, so the next one's gonna be Seagull. I would group Seagull, H O nine, H ten, H eleven as their, since Deal is a public access, to, to do the low-speed vehicle parking there. And I think the discussion would be maybe four spots, is what you said? Pat?
I've, I've identified four spaces for each one, instead of what was in the auto, um, proposal of the maximum number.
Okay.
I just listened, okay, so I will, I will say, yes, let's start with four, but now let's open it to discussion based on what Commissioner Murdock just said, that maybe, maybe four is too many per street.
Okay, so we'll make a motion for H O nine, H ten, H eleven to have paid parking low-speed vehicles with four at each one.
I will second. Now we can discuss.
Okay, well, I, I'm, since the right-of-way, the public right-of-way is at Deal, I would suggest maybe going to two at Seagull, two at Seaside, and leave Deal at four.
Can you guys talk into your mics, sorry?
I was thinking that with Seagull and Seaside being a little bit of distance from the public access, the people that are gonna use those streets are gonna be the people using their private walkways. So put them at two and leave Deal at four.
So yours should question, H O nine is two spots, H ten is four, and H eleven is two?
Correct.
Okay.
Any more comments?
Which would be basically an unloading zone.
Discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know the correct answer to this. I, I heard a valid point that it's easier to add them than, but we can also take them away very easily. So if it becomes a problem with four or two is too many, then we need to hear from the streets that we want them removed or whatever at a later date. I'm, I'm gonna go along with this, but I think we need to keep them at two.
Okay, so you want two at all three?
I, it's, it's purely for the residents. I don't think when, unless there's four golf carts, I mean, I don't know what you got. If I could ask the room right here, I would say, how many do they think's reasonable? And I think two, I mean it...
All right, by show of hands.
Well, that's where, but these are golf carts, and that is where we're...
We also have to consider people who have rental property?
Okay, let's, uh, let's go through the process, if I may, by show of hands. We're gonna go zero, one, two, three, four. Those in favor of zero, raise your hand. Okay, those in favor of one, those in favor of two, those in favor of three, and those in favor of four, okay? You got a snapshot of that, Commissioner?
So two of these one. Go ahead, Pat.
I, I would say, and I appreciate all you being here, but you are still a snapshot of the town. Let's start with two. It will come in front of everybody on, on the, at the February B O C M, and we can hear from our spirited property owners again.
So...
All right, I, I, I'll let the chair speak a minute. What we're trying to do here is to get a reduced
Right.
program to look at for future review. It may go up, down, may disappear totally or whatever, but we're trying to get to something that we can get to a point to discuss voting on a final, the final product, right?
Yes.
So nobody panics. We're just trying to get to something that we can get the Town Manager to reduce to writing that we can give an overview later. If it's February, that's great, it might be February and March. It might be ten years from now, I don't know. But...
Not with me.
We're just trying to get, we're trying to get this nine-hundred-plus syndrome out of the air. It's like this bacteria that we're all worried about. We're all worried about parking, and we can't get our hands on it. And we've got to reduce these numbers to get it more reasonable to consider. So that's what we're doing.
Let me remind you guys, the nine-hundred-and-thirty-five, or whatever he came up with, is allowed in your town ordinance right now. It was nothing we created, unless a driveway or posting rope is preventing it. So we did not do anything but map the parking of this island. That's all we did, and he did exactly what he was told to do, and you saw it on paper, and nobody likes it. So as of right now, it is what it is. It's gonna be a free-for-all if we don't fix it. It's gonna be the same thing. So we can move on, sorry.
All right.
H twelve's missing off of this list.
We'll get to that one.
All right, Doctor, you got the floor.
The motion's gonna be for H O nine, H ten, H eleven, LSV, two each.
Yes.
Second, somebody second?
Second.
For the purpose of keeping the audience informed, we're talking about two?
Two spot, two LSV spots at each one.
Two, two LSV spots on each one.
On Seagull, Deal, and Seaside.
And to clarify that, that's what they're gonna be called, not compact.
Right, no, we're saying, changing C to LSV, we already...
And if we want to, golf cart works too.
No, it's gotta be LSV.
No, it won't.
All right, so, so we've got a consensus on that?
Yep.
I, I, I'd like a, one piece of clarification. While, uh, Seagull and Seaside, uh, are on one side of the street, as, as shown in your table, that means two spaces on whichever one side of the street. Deal Street says both sides is a street. Is that gonna be one s- space on each side of the street?
Correct.
Is, is that the intent of the board?
I, I don't take it that way, David. I take it as you can park on whichever side you choose in an available place. If it says west side, like it says on Seagull, then you need to park on the west side. If it's both sides, it's a choice. If, wherever you can, that's open.
Remember, we have to back up this ordinance with signage. And in order to delineate two spaces on the west side of the street, we'll make a place long enough for, for two vehicles. If, if it's demarked in the ordinance as both sides of the street, I need to know whether I'm gonna put signage for one space on one side of the street and one space on the other side of the street.
Would you rather say either side?
Well, they gotta do one or the other.
No, because either side is a given, a choice. I'm just saying, it's, I, I understand, but it's...
The street may dictate where you have to put them in, so...
Well, the question, I think, becomes if you reduce it to two, can you say a specific side? And without going out and seeing each street at this point in time.
Right.
But...
Can, can we get through this process by just simply saying two, and then we'll study the situation?
Correct.
Yes.
I agree with that. All right, so we got a consensus on that?
Yes.
You got that, Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir.
All right, Doctor?
So now I'll say we move to H twelve, H thirteen, because these are designated as full-size parking.
H, H twelve was a private access street that at the meeting last Tuesday, it was grouped in the ones that we should, we should drop.
Correct.
So, so H twelve is not in my scenario, because I removed things that we had agreed at the meeting.
Okay.
Where is H twelve?
H twelve...
Is Point West Drive?
H twelve's interest Point West, you can't get a car off the pavement there.
Okay, so, uh, did you have, do we need to do H twelve separate, or did you have anything for H thirteen?
H...
That's Sailfish Drive.
H thirteen, I thought I had. I have Sailfish, I, I called it fourteen for the park.
Yeah, I did.
Okay, it should be H thirteen, Sailfish is H thirteen on my, yes.
So you've got ten full-speed?
That's because that's in the proposal.
Okay, I'll just making sure we wanna, so we're gonna, go ahead?
One comment, like, like on, on the canal streets, Sailfish, Swordfish, before we get a number there, I mean, if you want to use the number two, that's fine. But number one, I think we need to have a delineation done.
We're gonna get that done.
Because the, the whole thing there, I mean, to me, I call it marsh, but I, I'm not a, I'm not a, uh, you know, I'm not a wetlands man, okay? But I think it will pay the town, just, I mean, we can hire a company there for, very inexpensive, to come out and delineate those side streets. You know, if it's wet, we need, we don't need to be parking anything.
We've agreed to do that.
If, if it's wet, we don't need to be parking on it, okay? And, you know, because we want to preserve our wetlands, okay? And, and that's digestive, this, okay? So if we do that before we start naming, we've got, okay, each set of canals have two streets there. And we need, if it's wetland, we just, you know, even though we've been parking on it, that doesn't mean to continue to park them, okay? And I think that's the thing to do with that, okay? And, and we know where we're at, okay? So we, we, you know...
So, so H twelve, we can make a motion to eliminate parking?
Yes, correct.
Motion, I make a motion to eliminate parking on H twelve.
I'll second.
All right, discussion. All right, consensus?
Fine.
Everybody, consensus is approving that, Mr. Wood?
I understand.
All right, Doctor?
H thirteen, Sailfish.
Okay, I, I would actually recommend then, Paige, based on what Commissioner Brown just said, let's just treat all of the marshes together, which would be H thirteen, Swordfish is H eighteen, Sand Dollar, H twenty-one, Scotch Mountain, H twenty-four, Greensboro, H twenty-five. At the beginning of this program, we will not have marsh side parking. That removes all of them from the first year. Is that what you were asking for, Commissioner Brown?
What I'm asking for is that we check the delineation first, and, and to see if it's wetland or not wetland, okay? Because on my street, I, I live on Swordfish, okay? And, and up at the head of it, there, there's a, a small strip there that looks like, you know, maybe it is, could go either way. And, you know, I'd hate to be the one, because it's already hard enough, and I'm seeing some heads shaking, but it's wetland, you think?
The, if Swordfish is actually, the right-of-way is offset on Swordfish?
Yeah.
And the places where you can park around Swordfish and right-of-way?
Yeah.
It's actually practically, that's a section probably where, um, the birds are parting, birds are... Because that's, that, would we have to look at them for delineation? You discovered that.
So, so it's pro, it's pro, it's pro, that right-of-way...
The right-of-way of the street?
The right-of-way of the street, or...
The right-of-way is offset, because some of these roads...
Oh, I got that.
Yes, that's right.
I guess.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Are you ready to move on?
We, we might be able to get permission from...
Again, what we're trying to do is to get something on paper.
Just a general consensus here.
Just trying to get some numbers on the papers so we can review later. We have agreed, we have agreed to delineate the wetlands?
Yes.
And so we may come back and add or delete. But the purpose of this discussion is to get something down on paper that we can move along on. So having had a motion, a second, and discussion, are we in agreement about those streets?
Agreed.
Yes.
What are we doing with them? I'm sorry, I'm confused. Are we leaving them on the list, saying until delineation, or taking them off the list until delineation?
Leave them on till delineation. Delineation's gonna remove some of them.
That's right.
So I would leave them.
That's right.
I wouldn't take them off of that.
Okay. Qualifier. Depending on delineation.
Well, the laws of North Carolina are gonna take care of that.
No, but for the, the public to understand, it's, okay.
We're saying there may be ten on one of those streets, and then when they come in and delineated, it, it could take all ten, it could take nine, or eight, or six, or five away. Whatever it doesn't take, or what, whatever it does not take away, we are proposing to leave those spaces. Just to be clear.
So for this group, that's gonna be H thirteen and H eighteen?
H twenty-one and H twenty-four and H twenty-five.
Right.
All right, so H thirteen, H eighteen, H twenty-one, H twenty-five.
And H twenty-four.
And twenty-four.
Scotch Mountain.
Twenty-four, okay? So the motion be for H thirteen, H eighteen, H twenty-one, H twenty-four, H twenty-five? Further delineation before we determine. I make a motion for that.
Consensus?
Good.
All right.
So I, 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 I need to make sure that I understand that. For the purposes of this document, we're leaving that on there.
Correct.
I understand.
All right, Doctor, you still have the floor.
So that gives us H fourteen, H fifteen, H sixteen, H seventeen. That would be Tarpon, Marlin, Tuna, Dolphin, Swordfish. For the purposes of residents that may have golf carts, suggests that we leave S, LSV parking, one to two spots?
Correct. Same as the...
Do the same, two, two spots each road.
Okay, so H fourteen, I make a motion, H fourteen, H fifteen, H sixteen, H seventeen, we have LSV, two spots.
Okay?
Okay, that's correct.
Second?
Yep, second.
Is that a consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Anybody propose, all right, Mr. Wood, you got that?
I need, I need...
All right.
Okay, the, the next one will be the eight-hundred-block OBW?
He asked for a timeout.
Okay.
Okay, yes, sir.
So that leaves us to H nineteen.
Correct that. We're gonna have to do the same delineation with it also.
So, um, H nineteen, we're leaving, um... So, um, H-19, we're leaving on the document, but not delineating?
No. H-19, I would not put H-19 on. I do not believe, from what we discussed last time, the amount of time to get the 800 block ready. I don't think it's going to be ready for this season. So I deliberately did not include it in the scenarios because, again, I did not include anything I didn't feel we could have on April 1st.
So...
I'm simply saying, it's not in my scenario, and that's the reason.
So remove it from the list?
For year one, yes.
Okay.
So...
Alright, what's the consensus here?
I just wanna make a statement about the 800 block parking. Um, it's a big topic. I wanna go ahead and get it out of the way and get it above board. There's three possibilities in my mind that can be done with that property. Number one, we can put a parking lot there and some amenities and make it nice and with trash pickup and all that stuff, to hopefully be able to keep it a nice, clean parking lot area for the public with facilities. We would have facilities there. You know, we're kinda thinking at 796, we got a place, we can do it. The second, the second possibility for that property is the town owns that property. There's houses going on every postage stamp lot on this island, and it can be sold for houses. And the town could make, I would, if I had to guess right now in this market, I think there's seven lots there at least, six or seven. If you do the math, it's a million bucks to the town. If we're not gonna do anything with it and you guys wanna sell it, then we should sell it. But you're gonna have the same issue you're complaining about with the parking lot. It's gonna block your view, it's gonna, first off, it's gonna, it's gonna destroy the property. You're gonna have houses there. They're gonna have four or five cars apiece. You're actually gonna have more cars there if you build seven houses there than you would if you just put 16 cars there. So think about what you're asking for there. The third option, and it's my option if we don't put parking there, is to keep it like it is and preserve it.
I'm with that.
But we need to bulkhead it in so we don't lose any more of it. We need to delineate it, we need to bulkhead it in, and maybe keep it mowed or what, keep it up, just, you know, keep it presentable. Those are the three options. Now, it's up to you guys to decide which one of those three makes more sense. We desperately, we're eliminating a lot of parking here, and we're really finding out how much, we're gonna find out here shortly how much the town really does not own parking. We don't have permanent parking spaces. We're gonna get to that. But, so we could put some, it may be a requirement later on that we would absolutely have to have parking down at that end. So selling it for houses wouldn't be my first choice, although I'm a builder. But I would like to see it preserved. I don't wanna see every piece of this aisle built on. And this, what's gonna happen?
We need some green space.
That's my thought.
We need some green space.
H-20 is a parking lot right now, so we're going to that next page. So that was my two cents on that lot.
So...
We got a motion on...
Take H-19 off the list.
H-19.
We're taking it off the list for now.
Alright. H-20, Pump Station 3 lot.
It's a lot, it should, it is.
It is there now.
It is there.
It's a state.
So that's full-size, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, so, so H-22, H-23?
Okay. I actually made a point on the scenario. I honestly think Starfish, H-22, which has the firehouse there, we should keep that road clear. I just don't think it's a good idea to put anything on the sides of the road when you got the firehouse there. So, so if everybody's agreed, let's just say Starfish is zero.
Take it off.
Take it off. And as far as Lions Paw is concerned, I've looked, I've visited that road several times, and there's, gosh, to even park a LSV, you're gonna have to park it down halfway down the road. Everybody's got driveways.
Eliminate.
And so forth is really not a very good place to put anything for, at the corner. There's nothing there.
Yeah. Eliminate Lions Paw.
Okay.
Well, does anybody look, you've looked at that?
Can I say?
Yes, sir.
Can't?
What, look at what?
I haven't looked physically, looked.
Mr. Blum made the comment earlier, there's hardly any place that you could park there.
Hardly any place and none of places, too, we can't.
There's no viable spot there.
Can we leave two? We can knock them off the...
Leave two on Lions Paw.
Leave two on Lions Paw.
The only thing with that area, that the public access directly across from that, there's about four or five residents that already have golf carts. They used to allow parking in the four spots next to the fire station, and they eliminated those. So the people that bought in that area bought golf carts, 'cause there was parking. The fire station had five spots, and then there was four low-speed vehicle spots. There's two there currently now, but I know there was residents who have spoken to me, that four or five, they used for their grandchildren from...
We might need to look at that area.
From the surrounding streets. Because they're long, they put their grandchildren in the golf carts and take them over there, and they're currently parking there now.
If the golf cart parking impedes the fire station, then we certainly need to remove it. If it does not, then I think we can leave those two. But I, somebody needs to take a look at that.
Well, there's two spots there now that are being used behind those signs. When the, when people first bought the golf carts there, there's parking next to the fire station off of Ocean Boulevard West, and they were letting us use the four spots there.
Well, let's keep them and make sure it's okay.
They took those away and made them no parking, 'cause a couple of residents got tickets. So...
Between 125 feet for this scenario, it was never actually authorized.
Right, it was never authorized, but it was used by several residents for about, there was about four or five. So there is a need in that, around that public access, because there are people with grandchildren that use the golf carts currently.
Then I would change my position until we looked at it. If it, if it does impede the fire department and public safety, then they absolutely don't need to be...
Well, the two spots that they're using now do not. They're behind the...
Okay, then I would leave.
Okay. We're getting, see, this is the problem with we're doing the list and not thinking of what the proposed ordinance is saying as well, because the proposed ordinance is moving those signs up, as I recall. Is it within 25 feet of Ocean Boulevard? So if those signs get moved up to within 25 feet of Ocean Boulevard on all of the side streets, suddenly you are in that, what I call the zone, of where you might have fire trucks swinging around. I'm just, it's kinda trying to take all of this into consideration.
I was just saying, the two that are now there are behind that.
25 feet from the right-of-way corner on the outside, if I can remember all of what you have. The measurement change.
Okay.
Let's leave until we look at it.
So you wanna just put two on each of those?
Two and two, just like that.
Right now, yeah, I would say.
Alright.
Alright, everybody understanding where we are on that?
Yep.
Yep.
So that's H-22, H-23. Two LSVs.
Alright, Mr. Hewitt, you got that? Everybody in agreement? Alright, Doctor, go ahead.
Alright, so H-26, H-27. H-29. Okay, H-26 is Charlotte Street. H-27 is Durham Street. H-29 is Burlington. H-30 is Salisbury. H-31 is Sanford. H-32 is Fayetteville. H-33 is Lumberton. H-34 is High Point.
I also want to make a point, I don't understand why Raleigh was not assigned as a zone in the December, in the December packet. It just wasn't assigned as a zone. I actually was down there the other day, and there was an owner on the street who said to me, "Yeah, when we saw the parking packet, we didn't understand why we weren't designated as well, because we have right-of-way room." So I believe Raleigh simply needs to be treated as all the other canal streets.
Alright, can we make, can we make Raleigh like H-34B?
We can make, we can, we can number, it's probably all gonna get renumbered anyway, so...
For the purpose of her.
H-31.5.
H-30?
H-31.5, yeah.
H-31.5? Alright, so we're doing H-26, H-27, H-29, H-30, H-31, H-31.5, H-32, H-33, H-34. Two spots, LSV.
And 35.
35. Neptune?
Yeah.
Okay, I was just trying to keep in a group, that's fine. As two LSV.
'Cause High Point and Neptune actually are not canal streets, but they are, again, streets that are feeding a public walk, a public access.
People are currently parking on them now.
Right.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, so we made the motion.
Alright, you got a consensus on that?
For two LSVs.
Everybody understands where we are on those?
Yep.
We left the pure out.
Well, yeah. I'm going back to that one.
Okay.
So that takes us to H-28, which we had mentioned to take off right now, 'cause we don't have that property.
Okay.
Right?
As I said in my note, I excluded lots that I am not confident can be ready for town control paid parking on April 1st.
Well, if we don't own the pier when parking starts, nobody can park there.
Um, no, I don't know, I don't know how that will be controlled.
No, right.
We can't charge...
We can't, we can't charge people to park there right now.
Right.
No. We don't own it. I'm just saying, I don't know how it would be dealt with by the current owner.
For this, for the purpose of this document, we remove it.
Correct.
Okay.
Alright, yep. Bear with me just a minute. Whenever we got through with the list a minute ago, ending with Neptune?
Uh-huh, yes.
Mr. Hewitt, did you follow through that? Did you get what they were saying?
I got two LSVs for H-26, 27, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, and 35, adding in Raleigh Street.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, that's what, that's what they agreed to. Alright.
Okay.
Go ahead, Doctor.
Okay. H-36, H-37, H-38, H-39. Are those the ones with the private access across?
Um, H-39, I group into east of Town Hall, maybe, but Boyd, Roger, and Lane are all the private access, yes.
So H-36, H-37, H-38 are private accesses?
Correct.
So we eliminate H-36, H-37, H-38 from paid parking?
Agree.
Correct.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Alright, that's a motion, I guess, yeah?
Yeah.
Alright, everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
Consensus? Mr. Hewitt, you got that?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so you wanna address H-39 by itself, or?
Well, we had on H-39, what group?
Davis Street.
Right here. Right here.
Huh? This is for, this plan states for cars on Davis Street. Full-size cars. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Alright, H-39 is, we don't, I don't have the number of spots.
10.
10 full-size spots.
Alright, got that, Mr. Hewitt?
The motion's for H-39 to have 10 full-size car spots.
Everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, 10 on Davis Street. H-39, alright, go ahead.
Alright, H... H-40 is Davis Street Lot. Full-size in the lot.
That's an undeveloped lot right across over here. A lot of people probably don't know about.
Across from the basketball court.
It's a corner lot, basically right across.
And the conversations that were had earlier or late last year was that would not be difficult to convert.
Correct.
So I assume it would be ready for April 1st if this was put on the list.
Mr. Evans, I don't know, you might need to answer that question. With the permitting, Adam?
Well, for the purpose of this, we're okay to state that H-40 is full-size?
Yes.
Okay, in a lot party.
But the point I'm trying to make is, you said, Ms. Pat?
I was trying not to put anything on the list that we're not confident won't be ready April 1st.
April 1st, but can I get permits and do that by April 1st? It's gonna be close. I would suggest to leave it on the list and do the best you can.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
We need that lot.
Everybody agree with that?
Yes, sir.
It's just put and grab with it.
Yeah, okay.
You gotta have permits to do all that. Mr. Hewitt, you got that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright.
So H-41, Brunswick Avenue West, Davis Street to Jordan Boulevard, both sides of the street, full-size. Everybody okay with that one?
Yep.
So make a motion to H-41, both sides of the street, full-size parking?
Yes.
Alright.
Everybody okay with that?
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, Mr. Hewitt? Alright, move on.
H-42, Jordan Boulevard, both sides of the street. Full-size.
As it's being used, right?
Yeah.
As current.
Okay. You got consensus on that? Alright.
Yes.
H-43, in lot, Jordan Boulevard, Brunswick to Pavilion. Current use, yes.
No changes on those? Alright.
H-44, in lot, under Bridge. At the restrooms, current use.
Yes.
Everybody's like...
My discussion on that is that, you know, we have had several questions, what's gonna happen when we have a concert? Well, our parking is from 9 to 5. Concerts are at 6.
So it's current.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, H-45, Pump Station 1, north of Bridge, both sides of the street, full-size parking. Current use, right?
That's current use. Everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
All right.
Boat ramp area, lot, H forty-six. Full-size.
None. Everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah, that definitely needs to be...
We know we're gonna be revisiting that, we've got things, but for the purpose of moving, yeah.
It needs to miss boat and trailer only, for sure. Not full-size, I think.
Well, right now, what says on the map is full-size, so I don't know what you're gonna... I agree with you, it should be done like that, but it wasn't in the January document.
I'm just saying, we don't want a car poking and parking in the nine...
So H forty-six is designated boat and trailer?
Exactly.
Okay, so designate H forty-six as boat and trailer.
Okay, everybody okay with that?
Yep.
All right.
H forty-seven, South Shore Drive, west of Jordan Boulevard, both sides of the street's full parking.
That's same as it is now, right?
Yeah.
Okay, everybody in agreement with that? All right.
H forty-eight. South Shore Drive, Carolina Avenue, Quentin Street, both sides of the street.
That's the perimeter of lot. Yes, that's good, they park there now.
Okay. Mr. Hewitt, you still with us?
Yes, sir.
All right.
H forty-nine. Both sides of the street. Carolina Avenue, South Shore Drive, Quentin.
Uh huh.
Yes.
Okay.
H fifty, Brunswick Avenue East, both sides of the street.
They park there now.
Quentin Street, west side only, H fifty-one.
Anybody's got any opposition?
That's, and that's LSV.
H fifty-one right now is designated full, are we changing that to LSV?
I thought I saw LSV.
No, fifty-one is C, which was now changed to LSV.
Would be LSV, yeah, C is LSV.
H fifty-one?
Yeah, it's on my list, LSV.
I must be looking at a different document. H fifty-one in the ordinance is designated with a F.
It's full-size, I believe.
H fifty-one?
Current uses?
H fifty-one, Quentin, in the, in the presentation in the packet, it says C, ten, west side, R O W, H fifty-one. I'm looking in the December packet.
Ah, this is the ordinance. We're working off the ordinance that's in front of you.
The ordinance that's in your packet is what we've been doing it off of.
Oh, shucks.
Then that means the packet and the ordinance didn't match, so I'm confused.
I don't, this is the same ordinance as the package, but I don't...
It's all right, it's cars, for sure.
Is it?
Yeah.
So H fifty-one is full-size?
Yes.
West, west side only, okay. Quentin Street, handicap lot. H fifty-two.
Yes, leave that as is, that's free.
As is, free for handicap, right?
Yep.
All right. Halsted Street, H fifty-three, we've got that as LSV, so...
Uh, we need, y'all need to discuss something. We'll leave that as is, H fifty-two is in the ordinance. The discussion on the fee schedule, the discussion on the fee schedule, what happens needs to take place when you consider the fee schedule for that to...
Right. So we, we're not designated in the P right now, we're just designated in the parking lot.
Correct.
Right.
Halsted Street, H fifty-three. Um, LSV two.
You're gonna do that one to two also?
That's up to y'all.
Yes, let's leave it at two.
You're gonna take every side street to two?
That's what the, why would we put up?
Well, no, that was, that was the discussions on side streets, canal streets, west. I'm just making sure that, you know, it's, if, if it's, every side street is two, no matter what, um, that's fine, but I just wanna make sure.
You've got listed seven.
That, 'cause that's, that's what the parking lot table on page seventy-three must have said, yes. Halsted, C, seven, west side, rest, right-of-way, H fifty-three.
So for the purpose of cutting down, do you want to put four?
Well, okay, I, again, I, all I'm saying is, we heard from the canal street people who didn't want to have parking on their side streets. So I'm, I'm fine if for consistency's sake, you want to just say whatever is a side street is two. I haven't, I haven't heard from any, I don't think we've heard from anybody about these streets, that's all. That's all.
One thing I would like to inject also at the end of Halsted, there's a park. And that park has one, one, uh, handicap spot, and then I think two, I think you have. Is that gonna be a, a park that's free parking?
Yeah, we're gonna keep all the parks.
Never mind. So we're gonna leave the Halsted number fifty-three at four?
I'm okay with that. Somebody's right.
I think we gotta keep...
If we're doing two on the other one, I would do two on this one.
I think we gotta stay consistent, guy.
Okay, that's fine, I'm fine.
I'm putting two there.
I'm fine.
We're good.
It wasn't...
All right, so Halsted Street, H fifty-three, two LSV.
Two.
Then I just same for Ferry.
H, H fifty-four. Ferry Street, north of Ocean Boulevard, two LSV.
Correct.
Correct.
H fifty-five, there's a lot, Ferry Street Lot, full-size parking, in lot.
Yeah.
Okay? H fifty-six. Holden Street. It says west side only, full.
And it's a lot.
Okay.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
These, these empty lots that we're putting parking by, what's gonna happen when the owners develop the property? They're gonna come to the town and say, "Please, let me get to my lot"? Or, we're gonna have to create a process? You know, just because the town says you can park on the street, that property owner's got to be able to get to their property, so we're gonna have to create a method to eliminate parking for the owner of that property to be able to develop their property?
Eliminate itself, because if they gotta put a driveway in, we're gonna have to move the park. I mean, this right-of-way parking...
Okay, but I'm just reminding everybody.
We all know that.
We know. We know.
All right, Mr. Hewitt, you, you with, you still with us on your numbers?
Crystal.
If we're blocking somebody's developable lot, we have to move it.
All right.
Okay, so H fifty, we, we, did we do that? H fifty-six, F, full-size?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. H fifty-seven, Ranger Street, um...
And Elizabeth Street, let's take both of them out.
I propose just eliminating them.
Eliminate both of them.
Uh huh. But the people at Ranger Street want the golf cart parking and the bike parking like it is.
I believe...
I, I was confused about that.
I believe Lynn just said...
So H fifty-seven, they request to leave it like it is?
I don't... Well, everything left the way that, yeah. But I think, I think for future, one of the two places that the, that the, there's no Ranger Street, I think, as, 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 and craft. And if you've got the LSVs overall, Ranger can't really eliminate the industry parking and the craft.
I don't think we have any.
You didn't, but I think somebody said it was three. But you're fine on Elizabeth Street and Ranger, you're in the LSV.
Okay.
All right.
So H fifty-seven, they want to leave current, they already have golf cart parking and bike car parking, they do not want to destroy the bike parking. They want to leave the comp, uh, the LSV parking. Y'all okay with that?
Yes.
No, we're, that's what we're saying. All right, H fifty-seven, H fifty-eight, they want to eliminate the LSV. That's Elizabeth Street. Elizabeth Street, they want to keep it as is, okay, I'm sorry, as is. There's golf cart parking in there? LSV parking, so Elizabeth Street, Ranger Street, H fifty-seven, H fifty-eight, leave as is.
Are the numbers of eight and ten correct as is? Okay, I'm getting a, an, okay, so leave as is, what are the numbers?
Two and ten.
On Ranger, Ranger, on Ranger, you got ten. We're asking that you eliminate three of those on the east side so that we can maintain our bikes and wads and coasting road that's already there. That was not included, we can add as you can. It was ten LSVs totally on Ranger.
Right.
We're asking that you eliminate three on the east side, and you can see it's not on Ranger, the coasting road is already there with the bike wrecks and places for riding.
So we can leave Ranger Street and Elizabeth Street as is, is that correct?
Yeah, all I was asking is what are the numbers for as is, they are not the numbers in the table.
We need the current.
So you say you want sev, you have seven, and Elizabeth...
Seven, I measure that on the east side, we eliminate three if you want the coasting road. Now, if you wanted to do the whole east side, not the coasting road, the wagon and bike, you could fill that up now. And just do one side. But as it sits right now, I measure that there would be the elimination of three on the east side to keep the coasting road where it counts for the driving.
So why would you say LSV on one side?
That would be even more...
So that would be five and specify it's on one side?
So LSV on the east, bike on the west? I mean, LSV on the west, bike on the east?
That's correct.
Okay. Is Elizabeth Street the same way?
No, just leave it as it is. There's nothing there, but people can park there.
So that's what, so no low-speed?
We don't want any of those or any bike wrecked out there.
Why can't Steph get that accounted after the fact, just let the notes reflect as is?
As is, so H fifty-seven, H fifty-eight, as is.
You got that?
Yes.
Okay, H, H fifty-nine, Mullett Street. Calls for LSV on both sides of the street.
Again, for consistency, we say two, don't we?
Yeah.
Two total, or two on each side?
No, two, total.
Two total, all right, H fifty-nine, two. H sixty, Mullett Street Lot, full, in lot. Okay?
Yep.
All right, H sixty-one, in lot, Bendigo Street Lot, full.
Yep.
Yep.
H sixty-two, LSV, two. H sixty-three. This calls for both sides of the street, full-size parking, McCray to Dunescape.
Right, and in my scenario, I provide, I propose that we remove the south side, just keep north side to reduce that road, road narrowing?
Road congestion.
Well, yeah, that, that was my proposal, I...
That's fine, H sixty-three, north side parking only. Is that right?
Well, yeah, but the, the parking has to stay away from the fire, I mean, there's designations of how far away from a fire hydrant you have to be. That, that, that's the law, that will be imposed.
But would you say north side is this way? How many parking spaces is that?
Well, I assumed that the south side was similar to, um, to the, uh, H sixty-five that we were removing, which was twenty spaces, so I was assuming at this point that it was just a rough number of fifty. I, I'm, I'm, it had seventy, and I looked, all I did was look at the maps and say that... McCray. Forty?
H sixty-three, McCray Street, Avenue Eight of Dunescape. So H...
We need the golf carts, we got golf cart parts in our lot, and we don't mind if they, we tell them what we said, Dunescape, all golf cart parts.
All right. Okay.
Okay, wait.
Where's that?
Okay, does everybody understand the difference between Ocean Boulevard East and McCray Street?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep, so you're saying north side McCray is forty?
Okay.
Okay, then that's forty.
You got H, H sixty-three on the south side, which is...
Sir.
That's in front of lots.
Undeveloped lot.
There's, are the lots? Home McCray Street on the south, on the south side of McCray Street, are those lots buildable?
Some of them are, and some of them are not.
We can always add back two if we need to, but for this...
We can modify it after we get the delineation that we talked about.
H sixty-three is north side only, full-size, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Y'all okay with that?
All right.
All right, H sixty-three, north side, full-size, all right. Zone H sixty-four, in lot, Ocean Boulevard, East McCrayda Avenue Eight, in lot, full-size.
Correct.
Yes.
H sixty-five, we're eliminating, because of the...
Correct.
Correct.
Oh, oh, the eight fifty, the one we're eliminating there, that's on the east end, that's the old ocean...
Correct.
That's the old street there, real tight one.
You cannot park a car beside that dune, on that terrible dirt road.
That's where they're parking now.
That, that road needs traffic taken off of it.
Yeah.
Period, it's, it's in shambles, and that's a, that's a front of dune, and we need to stay off of it.
Everybody's, everybody's in agreement with that, Ryan?
All right, so H sixty-five is eliminated.
All right.
Correct.
All right, H sixty-six, Avenue A, west side only, full-size.
I think that one's fine.
Yep.
H sixty-six, Avenue A, full-size. H sixty-seven, Avenue B, full-size, both sides of the street, or you want to eliminate one side?
I flagged that in my own mind, I just flagged it as, is there a problem with full-size on both sides of that street? I'm just asking.
I don't know how people feel about that down there.
Both sides?
And does it work?
Not clearance?
It's a one-way street, so it's a one-way street north and south, and they pull in at a forty-five degree angle, we rarely have it here.
Okay.
Okay, so H sixty-seven, both sides.
Same thing on H sixty-eight.
Well, we've got that as, um, low-speed vehicles.
Yeah.
H sixty-eight is both sides of the street lot, are we leaving it at two?
Let me give you close.
Probably do one side of the street there, and that's...
So H sixty-eight, one side of the street, low-speed vehicles, two?
There's nothing else there.
Or do you want more?
All right, we'll keep it. That's a spot where it's not, it's not big deal.
So he needs to know a number, H sixty-eight?
Now, but, you know what, at, at this point, numbers are only pertinent to the, the twos and fours. If you're gonna say both sides of the street, the way it is now, it's good.
So H sixty-eight, both sides of the street, LSV.
As is.
As is, okay. H sixty-nine. McCray Street, Dunescape, full-size, north side only, parallel only.
Everybody agree?
Yeah.
All right?
Uh huh.
H seventy, full-size, north side of street only, that's McCray Street, east of Avenue D.
Gotta keep that one.
Yep.
H seventy-one. In lot, full-size.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
What's the count? Come on, man, you know.
Five hundred and six.
You the man.
How'd you get that already?
Five hundred and six.
How many full versus how many LSV? That's okay, that's okay.
Wait a minute, you're asking a lot, now. That was pretty, I'm impressed with a five and six.
I am too. Congratulations.
Yep.
Lot nine thirty-five, yes.
Can you, can you see in one of your lots, that I'll make a...
Yes.
Davis Street on Brunswick Avenue West to Jordan Boulevard, there's a lot more than sixteen space.
H forty-one? Brunswick Avenue West, well, we got full side, both sides of the street.
We're talking about from the corner of his building, the Jordan Boulevard, or to the rest...
And how, how many is it saying right now?
It's probably close to the third.
What's it saying? On both sides, if we go both sides, we're gonna double that.
It's close to twenty-eight percent.
That sounds good.
You can pull up a Google map and see that.
Right.
We could pull up a more, that's all.
All right, so where does that leave us after all that work?
I, I think that, that leaves us with, can we have a five-minute break?
Absolutely. Yes.
What time is it?
Please.
Okay, we took a five-minute break that lasted about...
Five minutes.
And, um, all right, where do we need to pick up? We were talking about what?
The, this, this mayor, if he leaves, there was a question after, before we break down, I think, vehicles in full-size. Of the five hundred and six, four, four hundred and forty-five, uh, full-size, eight and spaces, sixty-one on both feet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so...
Did you hear that?
All right, so help, help me get myself organized here. We have tentatively approved a working document, right?
Yep.
So now, are we in looking at the agenda? Are, where are we?